President to introduce the Elm Street students and Principal Brian Bemis to introduce the Fisher students. And they'll explain a little bit about the Great Kindness Challenge. That really is a proactive way for bullying prevention and really to help children develop positive attitudes. I don't want to say too much because I've been known as stealing people's thunder, so I'll leave it to you.
Great. Thank you so much. As Dr. Goff said, the Great Kindness Challenge is a positive and proactive anti-bullying initiative that we use to make sure that we're creating a culture of kindness, obviously not just during that one week of the year, but throughout the entire year. And we have some of our teachers nominate different students that went above and beyond to celebrate kindness. And I have brought four Elm students with me tonight who I am so proud of to share exactly what they did during the week. So we have Tenley and Lyle Campbell in kindergarten and...
First grade?
First grade and second grade. And why don't you guys go ahead and share what you did?
Me and Tenley, so we were bored at recess because there was basically no balls because they all went in the woods. So on the weekend, we went out in the woods and got all the balls, took them home and cleaned them.
Wow. And then what did you do with them?
We brought them back to the school.
Wonderful. Many more balls to play with at recess. So kind.
Tenley, did you want to say anything?
No.
Supportive sister. And actually, a really fun fact that I just learned is that Mr. Campbell was the high school representative for Walpole as school committee. We're junior and senior here, right? So it all comes back together. All right, now we have Caroline Sullivan, grade five. And Lily and Fox, grade five in Elm Street.
Kindness matters because it can help change the world and make a better place. It's important to show your appreciation to them and to help someone you know that you are friends. I think showing kindness every day is important because everyone wants to be supported in many different ways. One way I showed kindness is by putting a nice note into my friend's backpack to show her how much I care about our friendship. I also talked with my teacher, Ms. Kelly, to find out new information about her and to show her that I care. I also made it to a point to thank my best friend ever to show her how thankful I am that she gets me to school home safely every day. I think the Great Kindness Challenge is a great way to remind kids how important it is to be kind to each other. We all need kindness in our lives, whether you're a kid or an adult. I'm so glad our school has to do the Kindness Challenge.
Okay.
The Kindness Challenge is a fun way to make others feel good about themselves. Kindness should be shown all the time, even if there isn't a reason for it. Kindness is important because it makes you and others feel great about themselves. You because you know you did a good thing and someone else because they know you went out of your way to do something nice for... Because you went out of your way to do something nice for them out of everyone else so it'd make them feel special. Three examples of these challenges and why they are kind. One, make a new friend. This can be really good because you can become friends with someone who doesn't have any friends, so they'll really appreciate your kindness. Two, slip a note to your friend. It shows your friend how much you care about your friendship. Three, make a kind poster for cafeteria workers. This is special because cafeteria workers don't get much appreciation from their students sometimes, so it'll probably make their day. In my opinion, the whole point of the Kindness Challenge is showing your appreciation for others. I really like doing this challenge because it feels good when I finish it to know I made others happy.
And then you'll see in front of you that we have the Great Kindness Challenge student edition checklist. So many of our students, including the four here, completed many of these acts that are listed here, so they were acknowledged for that as well. And there was also a family edition that went home in our e-notes on Friday.
From top to bottom.
Good evening, everyone, and it's my pleasure to introduce to you four fifth-grade students from Fisher School who are going to talk to you how we have been celebrating and promoting kindness throughout the year at Fisher School. We have Morgan McNeil, Caitlin Conley, Priya Savayos...
And Kate Bonnen.
Now, we're going to start off with Morgan.
Hi, I'm Morgan, and I'm a fifth grader at the Fisher School. We have been trying to add more kindness in our school community. One of the ways we are doing that is by making kindness posters to hang up all over the halls. The fifth graders have made many posters to remind others to put kindness first. Most of the posters have a saying or sentence about kindness. The one I made with my friend Alexa says, "Spread kindness like confetti." There are many other posters that are hung up all over the school, and we hope to do this more often this year to help spread kindness in our Fisher School community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Conley, and I'm a fifth-grade student at Fisher School. The week before February vacation, Fisher School participated in Random Acts of Kindness Week. Each day, you are encouraged to wear different clothes to show an important theme. For example, Monday was Magnificent Monday. You could wear something black to show that everyone can black out bullying. On Tuesday, it was Terrific Tuesday. You could wear neon or bright colors to show we can all shine with kindness. On Wednesday, it was Walpole Wednesday. You could wear any Walpole colors or official school apparel. You are also encouraged to bring in a donation for the Walpole Food Pantry. On Thursday, it was Thoughtful Thursday. You could wear your pajamas to school and bring in a donation for the Rally Against Cancer. On Friday, it was Friendly Friday. You could wear red, white, or pink for Valentine's Day. You could also write a note to an adult in the building. Some other random acts of kindness we did were saying please and thank you, practiced expected behavior, made an effort to look people in the eye, and greeted people warmly. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Bonnen, and I am a fifth grader at Fisher School. I'm going to talk to you about kindness clouds. The guidance counselor at Fisher School visited all of the fifth-grade classrooms and gave them the opportunity to create clouds during Kindness Week. These clouds contain positive and heartwarming messages to all of the students in their classes. The purpose of these messages was to build self-confidence and make everyone feel appreciated and respected by other students and classmates. After people wrote the kind notes on everybody's clouds, everyone would walk back to their desks and read all of the message they left them. It made all of us feel happy and proud of how people think of us so positively. We hope to continue spreading kindness, friendship, and positive energy throughout the Fisher community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Priya Savayos. I am a student at Fisher School, and I am in the fifth grade. A teacher likes to swim. Well, I am here to talk about a program at Fisher School called SWIM. SWIM is an acronym for Show Respect, Work Cooperatively, Integrity First, and Make Responsible Choices. Together, these actions form the word SWIM. We swim together as a school, so come swim with us. This benefits the teachers and the students. Students can show SWIM by helping others in doing kind things. When you do these things, you have a chance to earn a swim ticket. A swim ticket is an orange piece of paper with a fish on it. When our school reaches 2,000 swim tickets, we get a school-wide pajama day. If we get a school-wide pajama day, we have a chance to donate money for the Rally Against Cancer. We also have another way to promote kindness. This is called a shout-out. When a teacher spots a class promoting kindness, they can write up a shout-out. These shout-outs are sent over the announcements for the whole school to hear. Lastly, I would like to talk to you about something we do as a school called 100 Random Acts of Kindness. This is a chance for students to show kindness. If a teacher spots a student showing a random act of kindness, they would give them a kindness ticket, which says what they did to show kindness. An example of what one kindness ticket says is, "My classmate Taylor helps another student, Cam, with a difficult math problem." This is one student showing kindness by helping someone with a math problem. I feel that this activity encourages students to be thoughtful, kind throughout our school and hopefully everywhere else. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Prehn?
I just figured out a mystery. I'm a teacher myself, and this past Monday, I checked in my mailbox copy hall, and there was a note in there, and I opened it up, and it was a wonderful note from a student that I had three years ago as a freshman. I forget what clubs she was with, but it must relate to Kindness Week in some way or shape. And it's nice, it's thoughtful.
Are there questions or comments? Mrs. Gallivan?
This is probably our favorite part when students come, but you guys made us very proud this evening, so thank you. I think it's also important for you to know that there's somebody in the back who's recording this. So if you have a grandparent or somebody who would like to hear you speak, you can go to Walpole Media, and you've been recorded this evening, and you made yourselves very, very proud. So that's something to use and celebrate, your good thing that you just did. So thank you.
Dr. Goff?
I just wanted to thank you all as well, and somebody also left me. I received a really nice note, so it was either from one of the two schools. I really appreciate it. It was a nice surprise in my mailbox, so thank you.
Ms. Giltz?
I just wanted to say I'm very proud of all of you for coming up here and presenting so clearly and speaking. It's a really hard thing to do in front of a group this size, and for you guys to do it at this age, it's really a wonderful thing. So good job. You guys all did an excellent job.
Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a great opportunity. If you guys would like to come up and maybe take a picture with your school, you can do so now before we move on to the rest of the regular business of the meeting. So we'll give you a couple minutes to do that as we gather ourselves.
Absolutely.
It was great, you guys. That was amazing.
Amazing presentation skills.
Sure.
I don't know. I don't know. I can...
It's a real skill.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
There's some kids in front of us.
I know.
I know.
Great job, you guys.
Great job, you guys.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Moving on to agenda item number two, Walpole High School Student Report. Representative Mahoney?
How's it going? Once again, my name is Brendan Mahoney, and I'm a junior at Walpole High School. Walpole High School winter sports seasons are wrapping up or have already wrapped up, and now we're into playoffs. Boys track and field finished with a regular season record of 5-0 and placed second in the divisional championship and went on to have many successes at All States last weekend. Girls track finished with a record of 4-1 with many great postseason performances as well. Girls basketball was sitting at 10-6 as of their first playoff game last night, which they won. And boys basketball is sitting at 2-20 at the end of their season. Girls and boys hockey are both starting playoffs, with the boys hockey team playing their game like right now. And wrestling also brought many wins in the postseason, such as victories in sectionals. As for student council, along with administration, we are in the process of planning Service Day for Walpole High School, which is set for April 17th. This day will give students the ability to team up with teachers and run service projects across the town of Walpole. The purpose of this day is to give back to the community which all of the students have been brought up in. And student council is also planning the blood drive, which will happen in a few months, giving students the opportunity to donate blood. Once again, March Pride-ness is going on this March at Walpole High School, and this month will consist of teachers recognizing students for showing any of the pride core values within Walpole High School, and will culminate at the end of the month with the homeroom who's collected the most pride tickets, winning a prize. And March Pride-ness was such a great success last year and had a great response from the students, so the pride committee decided to do it again, and they're hoping to bring the same energy this year. And it is also a very busy time for clubs at Walpole High School, as best buddies are holding a kickball and ice cream social tomorrow after school. And before school break, the speech and debate team was able to participate at Harvard for a national circuit competition where they were able to compete against some of the best teams in the country. Math team is also preparing for their playoffs and completing their problem sets for the upcoming matches. Dance company is preparing this year's show, which will happen at the high school on March 27th and 28th. And the Random Acts of Kindness Club has also been spreading joy throughout the high school in recent weeks with positive notes for Valentine's Day, among other things. And last but not least, our Walpole High School Mock Trial Team will be competing at Clark University in the Mass Bar Mock Trial Playoffs this Sunday for the first time in school history. I personally am excited for this, as I've been on the team since freshman year, and it's our first time making playoffs, so very excited for that. That's all I have, so thank you.
Questions for Representative Mahoney? Excellent. Good job. Very thorough. Thank you.
I have a scoot out, I have two tests tomorrow.
Good luck. Keep thinking about you. Moving on to...
Good morning.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, we have out-of-state field trip requests and a request for a 30-day waiver of Walpole High School robotics team field trip. Mr. Gaffey to present. Moving on.
Hello, my name is Brian Gaffey, and I'm the robotics team coordinator for Walpole High School. And so for those of you who don't know, Walpole High School has a competitive robotics team, and so we have 32 students on the team, 10 young female engineers and 22 young male engineers, and they're in all four different grades. And they work throughout the kind of the year, kind of September through December, learning engineering practices and how to safely use machine shops and tools, as well as computer design techniques in order to design a robot that has to play a game. At the beginning of every January, we get given a new challenge that's usually very different from what we've had to do in past years, just that way you sort of can't reuse any designs or anything. You always want to come up with the latest new things. And so for this year, the students have been working on, we have to shoot these seven-inch Nerf basketballs. You have to launch those about 35 feet to a goal that's about 40 feet up in the air. So it's a very, very exciting, very kinematic game this year. And so as you can expect, these are sort of very big, bulky kind of robots. It weighs about 130 pounds. They're about two feet by three feet, and this one has to be able to do a pull-up on a bar that's about six feet in the air, so it gets to be very tall as well. This team, we compete in this program called FIRST, and so we've got a few district events that come up. So we qualify, you play at a few local events throughout New England. There's 200 teams in New England. Then they'll take the top 64 after kind of ranking everybody based off your on and off-the-field performance to play out in New England Championships. And if you do well enough there, you can qualify to move on to the World Championship up in Detroit. Historically, we've been a very successful team. Last year, we were number 15 overall in New England, and we came in third place in Massachusetts. And so we've sort of made it, got to represent ourselves on that world stage, and in fact, we made the playoffs there in our division as well. So we do have a very successful team there. So one of our events is in Massachusetts. The other one, as mentioned, is out-of-state in northern Connecticut, and we sort of just picked that event based off... We used to go every year to an event down in Rhode Island, but unfortunately Bryant University was unable this year. So the event staff that used to run that event is now running this one just over the border in Connecticut, and so we know they put on a good show, so we wanted to make sure that we could go to that event. And I do apologize that it is coming in so late. There was just a little bit of a communication breakdown. I'm not physically in the high school every day, and so just some things got lost, kind of in the shuffle. Normally, we compete a little later in the year, and so it sort of came up a little sooner than I expected. And so we've just set some new plans in place for next year. We're going to work closely with the technology department to have sort of a more hands-on liaison to make sure these things happen a lot more timely. And then they also announce the events out in November, so that's when sort of we do start doing those things. So we're going to work to get all of our paperwork in a little sooner and not add it into the whole mess of also trying to build a robot at the same time, just as some things we're looking to do to sort of prevent needing more waivers in the future. And it was kind of a similar thing to that. We just wanted to have a precaution with that Detroit trip there. Normally, you won't qualify until about April 12th or so, and so that doesn't give you... It only gives you about two weeks to get ready to get out there, so I just wanted to put it out there. Still not sure if we'll qualify or if we'll go if we do, but you know, it's just always better to be prepared than otherwise. I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Questions from the committee? Comments? Mrs. Gallivan?
I love robotics because it's the right match for just a certain set of kids, and I think that it's great that you're here. I think it's important for anybody who is in our listening audience to know that your matches are... televised isn't the right word, but they're broadcast, because you could Google First Robotics, and you... Our team is playing in Woodstock, Connecticut this weekend. It's something that if you have a child who's interested, you can't really explain it enough. You kind of have to see it in action. So I thought it might be, you know, a good thing to know that if somebody wanted to watch, that's what they could do. And this is also a great group of kids who welcome people over to Plimpton School if they're interested in learning about it. Just give them a sense, Brian, of how many hours were put in in the last two weeks to get to where you are right now, because I know it's a crazy number.
Oh, I'd be, you know, it'd be a little shameful to say what it was over the past two weeks, but it was a lot. They sort of changed the building rules this year. Normally, you have to be done before February vacation, and now you get to finish at the... You have to have to bring your robot to the event. You don't have to submit it beforehand, and so projects expand to fill those deadlines, especially with some students. But so we've been... Typically, we're in Plimpton each night for about four, so hours a night, and we're there about three, four, five times a week. And then, you know, we'll come in on different days, so it ends up kind of being open about seven days a week when we get this kind of final homestretch, just because, you know, you can only have so many machines that people can safely use, so you'll have the kind of shooting group come in one night, working on their things. Programmers might come in the next night to pick up that robot, get it ready to, you know, use vision tracking to find the goals, make a drive and responsive to the driver inputs, as well as just kind of all the different kind of subgroups splitting that up. But yeah, most of the students have probably put in well over 100, 150 hours so far since the beginning of January. They put in about 12 a week, and so it's been a little over about eight weeks now. And yes, so additionally, we had the high school television studio come over and film us this past weekend, taking a look at the robot, as well as interview a few students about what they were doing, and they're looking to get that out on the Community Access television and into the high school. And we're going to send them the links to our events as they happen, so they can... They've got permission to kind of record and use some of that video, so I'm not sure what they're going to turn it into, but I'm very excited to see where that goes.
Cool.
Ms. Donizio?
Can we combine these requests into one motion?
We cannot. We actually need three, the first being a vote to waive the 30-day notice requirement.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Donizio, second by Mr. Prehn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Six, zero, zero. Put your hands out like that. That's not... Mr. Prehn?
Motion to approve the Woodstock, Connecticut trip on February 29th.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prehn, second by Ms. Donizio. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Six, zero, zero. Very good. Okay, I have a motion for the Cobb Corner Detroit trip. Mr. Prehn?
Motion to approve the Cobb Corner Detroit, Michigan trip on April 29th.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prehn, second by Ms. Donizio. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Six, zero, zero. Raise your hand twice. Come on now. Thank you very much, Mr. Gaffey. Good luck. We hope you get to Detroit and maybe you can have some of the kids later on in the year come in and share their experience with us.
Yeah, absolutely. Now that we don't have to keep the robot in what I would call a giant trash bag, I'd be happy to bring it down here.
Well, you know, the elementary students let us use their coding robots, so I think that the first step is you let us play with your robot.
All right. That is a deal. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Next order of new business is Safe Relationships Presentation. We have a copy of the presentation given to the grade six and grade nine students. We have Ms. Doherty from the high school here.
Yes, Marie Doherty at Justman Council at Walpole High. She's here to present tonight to discuss an overview of the DOV program that teaches students about the signs of abusive and unhealthy relationships, and that attached presentation is a copy, grade six and grade nine, and that just serves as a reference to you while Mrs. Doherty is talking about the program. I also, Marie, just want, for those of you who may not know, Marie Doherty is retiring this year after 23 years of service, so she will greatly be missed, and we really appreciate your dedication and commitment to the Walpole Public Schools and our students.
Our decisions.
Before I speak, I do want to introduce Chris Riley. He's been a member of the DOV organization for the last two years, last three years. He's a senior, so we're losing him. We're going to have him speak a few minutes as well. So anyways, I was asked by Bill Hahn to come and speak about what we do at the high school to promote and educate students on healthy relationships. For several years now, the school has partnered with the DOV organization. DOV is a domestic violence organization centered in Quincy, Mass, that provides support, counseling, housing, and other services to victims. A few years ago, they approached us, I think through probably Mr. Embush Steve, our principal, asking if we wanted to have a collaboration with them. So he asked me if I would make that happen, so we did. And at first, we brought plays, we brought some present... And we've been doing that regularly, the yellow dress, remote control. We try to gear it towards, you know, the age group nine and 10, see yellow dress and then the remote control. Themes of these plays revolve around healthy and unhealthy relationship. A few years back, starting with Chris and his class, I think it was sophomore year, freshman year, after seeing yellow dress, a lot of them got really interested, and they really approached me about starting, doing something with this. So I was thrilled to do that. So they... Before that, though, the DOV staff had also come in and done presentations to our health classes. So that's been going on probably for four or five years now. Then we started involving the students, and really it was based on them wanting to get involved. So that had to lead to some training, and these kids have gone through... Some of our kids have actually participated in three-to-four day trainings in the summer. Other kids have participated in an all-day training. That is pretty intensive, and he could speak a little bit about that in a minute. So since that time, for the last three years, they have been going into the classrooms with the DOV presenter, and the health teachers, the kids themselves, the ninth graders of all, I think they've really gotten a lot out of it. It's nice to have your peers, kids slightly older, going in and talking about such sensitive stuff. So they've been well-received. Recently, this past year, the current DOV participants have expressed interest in bringing this message to the middle school. So we just started... So we're going to start with the sixth graders. I'm hoping, obviously, that this is going to continue. I think it's a good thing. We just had a mini-training this afternoon. Jen Bolton from DOV, who's been a wonderful collaborator with us these last few years, came down. It was 11 students participated in it for two hours, and I think it got a little lively there. It's a... Other kids have participated in an all-day training that is pretty intensive, and he could speak a little bit about that in a minute. So, since that time, for the last three years, they have been going into the classrooms with the DOVE presenter, and the health teachers, the kids themselves, the ninth graders of all, I think they've really gotten a lot out of it. It's nice to have your peers, kids slightly older, going in and talking about such sensitive stuff. So, they've been well received. Recently, this past year, the current DOVE participants have expressed interest in bringing this message to the middle school. So, we just started, so we're going to start with the sixth graders. I'm hoping, obviously, that this is going to continue. I think it's a good thing. We just had a mini-training this afternoon. Jen Bolton from DOVE, who's been a wonderful collaborator with us these last few years, came down. It was 11, 11 students participated in it for two hours, and I think it got a little lively there. It's a great group, a lot of seniors, but we've been very blessed. So, that in a few weeks, we're going to present a middle school appropriate presentation, whereas at the ninth grade level, we talk a lot about domestic violence, dating violence. The focus of this presentation will be more about healthy friendships. Students are going to be asked to think about qualities that make up a healthy friendship, such what are the benefits of having friends who are different from you, recognizing when a friendship is not a positive and healthy thing, as well as other relevant topics. They are going to also discuss some dating, because there are sixth graders who date, and you know, Chris may want to speak about that a little bit. So, in addition to the DOVE program, the high school, the entire high school counseling staff participates in SOS program, which we've had now for several years. We started with this SOS program, mental health issues and suicidality. We've expanded the whole SOS program to, we have substance abuse for 10th graders. For juniors, we do a thing on stress, because we have found that junior year is a pretty stressful year, significantly stressful year. So, the whole SOS is really based on the concept of ACT, Act, Acknowledge, Care, and Tell. And so, what we want students to do about any of these issues, whether it's about, you know, mental health, substance abuse, stress, is if you, if somebody you know, or you yourself, or you know, you're worried about somebody, that we want you to acknowledge it. We want you to care about this person or care about yourself. And lastly, we want them to tell somebody, you know, hopefully, somebody here at the school, a neighbor, their mother, you know, somebody that's going to be able to steer them in the direction of getting some help. So, you know, obviously, this is a work in progress, and every school needs to be working on this all the time, but that's what we're doing at Walpole High.
Further questions? Mrs. Doherty?
I just think it's so important, and I'm glad to hear that you're doing as much as you are. I think that, you know, as we expand health and wellness, that this is, just has to be a priority, because you don't want to, you don't want to do these kinds of things in a one-shot deal. So, thank you.
Chris, speak for a few minutes.
So, hi again. I'm Chris Riley. I'm a senior at the high school. I joined DOVE my sophomore year after seeing the yellow dress presentation. Me and two good friends of mine approached Ms. Doherty about starting the DOVE club at our school, because we thought it was an important issue that wasn't really talked about that much at our school. We have the presentations usually once a year, but we don't hear much after that. So, we got together other kids who believed in the same topic that we did and thought it was as important as we did. And I think every year, it's gotten a great response from all the students. We started with, I think, around six to eight kids our sophomore year, and we have, I think, around 30 this year. A lot of them seniors. We are doing our best to get the younger grades involved, which I think goes along with the freshman health presentations we've been doing. Again, like Ms. Doherty touched upon, we do all-day trainings at school where Jen Bolton comes in or another DOVE representative, and we sit in the auditorium. They have a presentation. We do different activities. We watch different videos to help us learn and gain knowledge on the topic, so we can present in our best ability to the freshman health classes, which I think are very beneficial to them, because a lot of them are freshmen. So, first year at the high school, they get a little rowdy when we first get in, but I think it really sits with them. I've had multiple freshmen approach, many different people on DOVE, saying that it was really great what we did. And we are now starting to touch upon middle school classes. DOVE representatives, students, Jen Bolton, Ms. Doherty, we have gone to the middle schools, and we've talked to the principals and assistant principals, discussing what we could do for the middle school. And like Ms. Doherty said, again, we had a mini-training today. It was two periods at the end of the day. We talked about healthy friendships rather than dating violence and abusive relationships, which would translate into the high school. So, we talked about friendships. Do they last? Do they fade away? How to handle them? And then, translating that information into dating, because again, in middle school, that does happen. A lot of the kids aren't mature enough yet to deal with that. So, we practiced what traits do you look for in a partner and a friend, and how a lot of those correlate? And yeah, it's just been a great experience. I think it's something that, again, isn't really talked about, but once talked about, a lot of the kids get a great response. We do activities, the presentations. I think every year, we're really just trying to build upon it as best as we can, because there's not too much you can ever do about this topic, especially in high school, where a lot of kids don't really know what to do. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Donizio?
I agree with Mrs. Galvin that this is hugely important, and I think it's amazingly important to have male students involved in this. And I think that you have tremendous power to be a role model for the younger students that you're working with. So, thank you very, very much for being that male role model in our community. I think it's really, really important and incredible. Thank you very much for that.
Further questions? Dr. Goff?
Chris, thanks. You know, I knew you in middle school, and you know, I don't expect anything less from you. I think it's great that you are taking on this leadership role, and you're continuing to do that. And then, just to piggyback off what you were saying, Carrie, that, I'm glad that you're going down to the middle schools, because you know, not only are they learning, you know, this curriculum piece, but they're also learning that there are opportunities for them to take leadership roles when they're, when they're in high school. So, it's giving them that opportunity to look at what they're able to do and learn when they get to high school. So, thank you.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, now we have strategic business item number three, strategic plan goal one update.
Again, good evening. Again. Is it something that you know? So, Mr. Bemis and myself are here to present goal one for the strategic plan, which is to provide engaging curriculum, differentiated instruction, and ongoing assessments for all students. I think what's different about us presenting goal one now is that we've most recently had the opportunity to participate in the strategic planning meetings, so we've been able to talk about, you know, what's been done so far, prioritize some of the action steps, and then talk about what next steps look like. So, objective 1.1 is to create consistent, coherent, and sustainable curriculum maps for pre-K to 12. Our first action step is to determine purpose and audience of curriculum maps. That was actually an update, and also something that we decided to prioritize when we met. And that was because there was a lot of thoughtful discussion on exactly what a curriculum map looks like and who the audience is. So, there was some discussion between different specialists and classroom teachers, as well as different grade levels, of is it to parents? Is it to staff? When we do communicate it with all stakeholders, and exactly what does it entail? So, we thought that the first priority would be to actually determine the definition and purpose, and who the audience will be for that. Action step number two is to review and revise curriculum review cycle, which includes the identified areas of improvement in order to improve, in order to strengthen instruction. That was also our second priority on objective 1.1. We've really felt that we needed to make sure that this was determined before we can move forward to provide action step number three of consistent professional development to meet those needs, and then action step number four, which is to communicate the curriculum review cycle and curriculum maps to all stakeholders. One of the great pieces of meeting most recently was to have all the different grade levels, pre-K to the high school, speak about what's been done so far, and just some of those examples is the elementary level enhancing the scope and sequence, as well, as well as in the middle school for math, to really talk about the next step for us, which is to build a cohesive approach for vertical, as well as horizontal alignment for all students. And also, that also speaks to the common language. That's the next step that we're looking for, common language that's universal, so that everyone is, knows exactly what we're referring to when we're speaking about what is there. So, we're also looking at all of the work that the high school has done for NEAS, which has completed a large inventory for overall curriculum, so they have a very clear understanding of their strengths, and also what needs to improve. Shannon Finley has done a tremendous amount of work for the elementary level with putting together a literacy committee that the elementary principals were on to talk about what the vision looks like for ELA, and that's where we determined to bring in Lucy Cockens, units of writing this year, moving forward to the units of reading next year, as well as that professional development piece in terms of bringing in Claire Landergin, which is a curriculum specialist to help us with that. Middle school has brought in the eighth grade civics, which is a brand-new curriculum, and also, they are up against having consultants come in to do the ELA audit moving forward. So, a tremendous amount of work has been done to move the district forward in this goal, and we're looking at those next steps for that cohesive approach for vertical and horizontal alignment.
I will be talking about the second objective, which was to provide personalized learning through flexible instructional practices that foster growth for all students. The draft that you have may say provide individualized learning. That wording was changed as a result of our discussion at the strategic planning meeting. We had a great discussion, our group, about the difference between individualized and personalized learning, and we determined that individualized was mostly based on individual student performance, whereas personalized learning was, took into account individual student performance, but also students' needs, their interests, and their learning styles. So, we really felt that personalized learning encouraged and allowed for students to take more ownership of their learning. So, we decided to change personalized, sorry, individualized to personalized throughout that objective, as well as some of the action steps. We also prioritized our action steps for this objective, and they're in order of priority, and the first says to identify models of instruction, materials, and resources that will be utilized by classroom teachers to meet the needs of all students. And again, the wording was changed a little bit as a result of our discussion, where we moved models of instruction as the first wording in this action, and because we felt that was the most important. And the models of instruction that we talked about was that we need to have more student-centered approach to instruction and less teacher-directed. More small-group instruction, the workshop model, cooperative learning opportunities, differentiated instruction, and also those personalized learning opportunities that I mentioned. And we have a completion date of ongoing. This hopefully will be a healthy conversation at all levels in the coming years to best provide that type of instruction, which is best for students and will require some professional development. Which leads me to the second action item, which is to dedicate that professional development time to support tiered practices. And those tiered practices are those models of instruction that I just referred to. And this action step will also provide opportunities and time for coaching of our educators, consulting, collaboration time among peers, peer observations, and also workshops where teachers are trained in the best uses of qualitative and quantitative data to best inform instruction. And then, our third action item was to utilize the student-centered learning pedagogies and personalized learning experiences that connect students to the real world. These real-world learning experiences are designed, or will be designed, to increase and enhance student engagement. Personalization in addition to responding to the needs and interests of students, it also teaches them how they learn best as a learner, and also gives them a variety of ways in which they can demonstrate their understanding. So, it's not just limited to one way of showing that they understand something. It's a, it's a variety of ways for them to be able to do that. So, it was a great discussion with our group, and it was a wonderful experience for me to be a part of. I haven't been a part of that type of a strategic planning meeting that day. It was, it was great. So, we had a great conversation, and a lot of what we talked about ended up in our goals. And we have the third objective, which was, which reads to provide, oops, sorry, that's the same one I just read, to utilize quantitative and qualitative data to inform instruction and improve practice. So, this goal, or sorry, this objective was really focused on the data and how we can best use it in a systematic way to improve student achievement. The action steps are to develop a district-wide plan for looking at student data, a protocol or a procedure that we're going to use that, that all the schools will be familiar with. This is how we're going to, to look at the data, and this is how we're going to create action steps from these data for individual students. We're also identify digital tools that will provide students learning benchmark data in the areas of math and literacy, to have those resources for our educators. And going down to the third action item, create and identify common informal, informal assessments for our students, and to provide professional development to support the use of these tools and resources for that data collection. So, it's, this third objective is, again, all about the data, about how best to use it to improve student achievement. All of these objectives, or this entire goal, will be used at all the levels for each school to kind of tailor it to their own needs, and that will be reflected in each school's, school permanent plan.
And what we talked about more about when looking at the qualitative and quantitative data is that it's so important to just talk about students and where they're at and how to move them forward. So, no matter how you're sitting down and what data that you're reviewing, that you have a plan in place to analyze it. So, what you're looking for, whether it's in writing, or if it's in SEL. So, you know, sitting down and really talking about how this data reflects writing, but also math, ELA, but the whole child, right? What else they're struggling with? Friendships, navigating peer relationships, just being able to have really thoughtful discussion to make sure that all, all the needs of our students are met moving forward. One of the other pieces we talked about for this objective was that there's a huge influx of digital learning, and it was great to hear all of the input from across the different grade levels of what we're utilizing right now, whether it's Newsella, which is differentiated articles for our students to access, or Google, the iReady diagnostic tool at the middle school, you know, just being able to sit down and look at student work in terms of edulastic. Two of our, Fisher and Elmer, also participate in an ST math right now, which takes all the language out of math to look at problem solving and how the students come to the answer. Paradek, reading ally, so really utilizing what we have, and also bringing in running records most recently to know exactly where our students at and how to move them forward at all levels.
And then, have a system to, in six weeks, revisit that data, look at most current data, compare it, mark progress, and then again, determine those action steps for each individual student.
Questions on the committee? Dr. Goff?
I have a question, but just a comment. Just to let the committee know that the chairs of each of these goals, they are going to make sure that all, everything's updated. The deadline's March 2nd, and then that's so Bill and I can, can look at it, review it, make some suggestions, and any edits we need to make, so then we can bring it to you for, for feedback.
Questions? Mrs. Galvin?
I think this is one of the most important goals, just in terms of like the basics of what a school system does, and I like the focus on the whole child. And I know that you're trying to decide how to, who the curriculum maps are written for, but I got to say, it's a hot-button topic for me in that I've heard about curriculum maps for 20 years, and I've never seen one, like not one. And so, I think that's, it's not that important for me to see all that you do, but when we talk at the school committee level about how are we doing as a district? Are we moving kids forward? The only data that we've had ever is what you can pull off the internet, and that doesn't show the whole child. So, I do think that, I think that Bridgette and Bill are trying really hard to infuse a new way of thinking of, of curriculum and instruction, and a new way of thinking of curriculum and instruction, and I think there's so much good going on there. I think it's important, though, for us to figure out, how does that get translated first to the school committee level? But then also, I know parents who are, and some people are more into it than others, but we're not, we don't have a good presence online when it comes to curriculum. So, just, those are just a couple of thoughts. Not that you have to solve them immediately, but, you know, I think it's something that we should be thinking about as you're doing the work that you're doing, because it's important work.
And that was shared from parents within our group, too, just about, they don't need to know the lesson plans that are taking place, but at least the topic covered and the scope and sequence more, so that they can understand exactly what curriculum is being taught and when. So, that's why we had a little bit more of a thorough discussion regarding the audience and how it is accessible for families. And there is so much work being done in terms of that data collection. We have data dashboards at the elementary level that are just so thorough for ELA and math, and now bringing in writing with the Lucy Cockens checklist, that we can pull up when making placement decisions to see, you know, exactly how students are moving forward for the Cluster 1 assessments for math, to Cluster 2, to MCAS scores. And then, what's most important, though, is coming together as grade-level teams with the reading specialists and math coach and administrators to talk about, well, what does that mean? And that's where you're encompassing the whole child, so it's taking that, that data to how they're actually performing, what's going on at home, what's impacting their day-to-day access to not just the curriculum, but the school day. So, it's really having that thoughtful discussion and tying those two pieces together when talking about how students are performing. But you're right, I don't know how we share that with, you know, because there's so much being done, really.
And then if the audience, or the educators, to have that common language that Carrie mentioned earlier. We have so much new language that we're using with our students at the elementary level, particularly in the area of writing this year with the Lucy Cockens, and next year with the reading, but also with our social-emotional programs. And we're making a lot of progress, but then we get to middle school, and we call some aspects of writing different things, and in math, the language is different also. So, the students are now, you know, the teachers are finding that they have to stop and reteach or explain what some of the languages that we're using. Whereas if we had that map in sixth grade, or teachers could see what fifth-grade students are being exposed to as far as a, you know, in writing, an exciting beginning, or whatever they call it, in sixth grade, we can call it that, too, and we don't have to explain this. So, just continue that momentum through also. So, that was a part of the discussion, too, with high school, middle school, and elementary students all in the same room, we realized that was a piece that we should have included.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. Beam us some light on the beard.
Thank you.
Short beard, never go wrong.
Moving on to our last item of new business, we have FY '21 budget and fees.
Just before Mr. Fisher gets into fees, I'd just like to just do a quick recap and just remind everybody before the break that our last school committee meeting, that I mentioned that we presented our budget to the finance committee on February 10th, and just to know and remember that there is a gap between the available revenue and our current budget. The town administrator originally is, was at a 3.3% increase when we last spoke, and school committee voted on a recommended budget increase of 4.8. Jim Johnson informed us that he has increased the recommended amount for Walpole Public Schools to 3.92%. So, we still have a little bit of a 1% gap there. It's also important to reiterate that the budget's unusual. It's due to, you know, we have some extenuating circumstances. We've got the, if you remember, the Medicaid reduction, approximately $315,000. We've got the special ed increase of approximately $221,000. So, you're looking at, you know, that 536, you know, $536,000, which, which if you look at that, that equals approximately our total requests for next year. So, and we just found out yesterday, thanks, Mike, bringing that to my attention yesterday. If you remember, we kept talking about the preschool grant, and that every year, they said it was going away, it was going away, and we kept getting it, we kept getting it, it was $30,000, it's gone. So, we're not getting it, so we have to factor that in as another reduction, okay? As an, we're not going to get that, so that is our gap will increase by $30,000. It's important to note. But we're going to continue to work through it, and it's our hope that, you know, we can hold on to things that we're doing currently and meet the needs of our changing population, so that we can continue to meet the needs of all of our learners in our population. We're meeting with the finance committee again next Thursday, so we'll continue to keep everyone updated. I'd like to have, if it's okay with the committee, you know, two more budget subcommittee meetings. I'm thinking one next month, and then maybe the other a couple of weeks prior to town meeting, if that's okay with the group, and we'll work on setting that up.
Is that a workshop for everybody, or a subcommittee meeting?
We can talk about what you would rather do. If you'd like to do a workshop, we can do a workshop as well, either or, just to have, you know, two, two meetings, I'd like to have a couple more meetings. Questions or comments?
Take it away, Mr. Fisher.
Okay. So, tonight's discussion on fees included in your packet is information related to the fees in Walpole Public Schools. Upon request from the school committee, I've compiled this data for a review and discussion in an effort to continue to properly fund these related services. Some of the details that have been provided are the fee description, the date of the prior fee increase, the amount of the prior fee increase, and the additional revenue that an increase would generate. And I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have about fees. I apologize, I missed the first one because I had a flu, but I hope you had some good details there, and I heard the discussion was good. Happy to answer any questions you have.
And just to, just to kind of, Mr. President, just around this debate, again, thank you, Mr. Fisher, this is, this is great, especially with the prior dates, we can kind of know how long it's been since we've looked at this. One of the things, obviously, that's impacting us, especially in food service and in some other areas, is the rise of the minimum wage, which is, which is a good, but it's also, it's a good that we must address as a district. And so, I think we began that when we looked at preschool fees for some of the VAs there as well, that, that was a contributing factor, and we can see that we're being proactive in looking at how that rise is going to affect our bottom line, not just in this budget cycle, but in the ones to come. And so, obviously, this, this discussion is part of a commitment we have as a committee and as a body, always on our budget deliberations, to look at every option to be as fiscally responsible and moderate in our outlook. And so, I would open it up to the committee if people want to speak on specific items, or perhaps we can go down the list, whatever people feel.
The one thing I'd like to add is that some time has passed with some of the fees as you pointed out. I just want to point out, it's not from neglect or just setting it aside, not paying attention to it. It's, the administration, the school committee always support trying to maintain fees at a level and not increase when we don't have to, but I think you see some really substantial explanations in here about why the need to increase some of these fees. I just want to point that out, because you'll see some of these fees haven't increased in some time.
Questions or comments on the committee? Mrs. Galavan?
I really don't like the idea of raising fees. I'm sure nobody, nobody does, but the reality is, if we're expecting a certain portion of our budget to get covered by the cost of fees, and the budget goes up, the fees have to go up, too. So, you know, I, I think that the best we can do is to try to spread out the cost over the families that, that will have to pay it. So, like, looking at, looking for the fairest way to spread the growth out was something that I think was important. We had a workshop a little while ago and talked somewhat of it, and, you know, gave us some time to think, but I think we have to raise the food service prices. I'd also want to consider bus transportation. I don't know if this is what you want to do, Bill, or how you want to handle it.
Yeah, I think, you know, we can, we can suggest things, and have discussion on that. I think that's probably the best way to proceed.
We've already raised the price of preschool, and I think extended day is growing, and especially as it's offering more and more opportunities, that's another area that I would look at.
Questions, comments, or thoughts on these three source areas to raise fees upon?
So, during our workshop, we discussed this extensively, and I agree with what Nancy said. We gave a lot of thought, so that we weren't impacting a particularly small group, and how we could do this fairly, and after Ben, looking at some benchmarking, I thought, you know, pointing out that our bus fees, that comparable towns were charging more, that to me is important. I always like to see what other people are doing, and we did spend, I mean, it was what, at least two hours going over our thoughts on just how other towns are doing things and what made the most sense, so I support that recommendation.
And I think it's important to highlight that the bus fee hasn't been raised since June of 2015, so that's five years. The food service, lunch costs haven't raised, been raised since the 2015, 2016 school year. An extended day has also been flatlined since the level, level cost and tuition since the 2015, 2016 school year as well.
The thing I would point out about extended day, it's a large number of workers in that program. Some of them will be impacted by the minimum wage increase, but it won't just be them, it'll be those above them that will have to be pushed up in effect to keep everyone kind of moving forward. It generates a lot of revenue in that program, but it also generates a lot of expense in labor, obviously. And I think the best strategy, and I've worked with Evan Clifford at length about, and had very lengthy conversations about it, is to try to keep pace with increases per year, rather than try to solve it with one shot, because that won't happen, it would be a very dramatic increase. So, that was included in here, I'm sure you read it. I just want to highlight that that one really stands alone in its, in its own challenges.
Excellent. Mrs. Galavan?
I want to sort of point out the fact that we, I didn't put athletics on the table, and that's partially because everybody who rides the bus in grade seven through 12 has to pay, and those, the families that are, that have kids who are athletes, that there's a big overlap there. But in addition to that, two-thirds of the athletic budget is already paid for by parents. So, I think that that's an important thing for people to realize. The thing that I didn't realize until I read the newspaper today is that the athletic department has, or the athletic directors around the state are meeting tomorrow morning to talk about a potential change in the tournament structure, which could, could have a big impact on our budget, if you ask me.
So, I can add, I can add something to that. Our Connolly Bus contract came in the other day, and the increases on the regular yellow buses for regular bus transportation were in keeping with 3%, you know? I projected right on with that, I'm not worried about that. Athletic buses came in very high, to the tune of about $16,000 increase next year. So, Ron Dadd and I spoke about this, and we have a, I'm trying to set up a conference call with Connolly Bus, or have them come in, and try to work something out with them for athletic fees alone. And that's year two, and then year three goes up even higher. So, I'm just really concerned about that particular one. We're very fair in the yellow bus, regular transportation, but athletics, we're going to have a significant challenge with the transportation line item for athletics.
So, in my opinion, that means we have to sort of put that on hold, and we may have to revisit that. I, I really would not like to try to do that, especially because we are hitting the same families twice. But, you know, the proposal that they're voting on tomorrow, it has the potential to say the geography doesn't matter in terms of tournaments. So, your, the size of your school determines which bracket you're in. And right now, a tournament, you're, the tournaments are set up with like north, south, central, and west, and that would go away, go away in one of the proposals. So, to me, that means just a lot more travel during tournament time.
That was Ron's other concern, tied into the increase in the fee would be further trips, further distances.
And hopefully, that doesn't pass. I don't know what Ron feels about it, but just so, where I stand, I mean, it, I think it could have a real impact on, on people's budgets.
We may want to look at, you know, as we get into the capital planning period, it might be cheaper to get another, you know, van, so that we can have two and take a team out, and that might save some buses there, but.
I think we may be at yellow bus options, too. We definitely need to consider something, a lot of towns in the area are just learning about it, because I was shocked by how much, how high this came in, and so we started to look at things we've ruled out in the past, and I think towns are doing things like buying yellow buses and hiring CDL drivers, because it makes sense now, because these fees have gotten so high. So, that may be an option we want to look at. I could put that information together, and we can see where you'd like to go with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Galavan, for raising that, and, and Mike for kind of putting that together. It's this one other fluctuating piece of our incredibly complex budget, so I'm going to keep an eye on that as it develops over the next few months. As for me, I am also in favor of raising the food service, bus transportation, and extended day. And I, it's one thing that, the fees, rather, one thing that did, I forget, did we talk about parking? I know it's not a huge amount, but it's also not a huge increase, $25. I would favor adding that as well. I always remember, like, five of us would pile into a car and, like, divide the fee amongst us, so I don't know if that still happens, but that adds an additional $5,000. People's thoughts on that, but I'd be open to adding on the increase of $25 to the $200 a year Walpole High School parking.
I just have a logistical question. When we're voting on increases to separate line items, are we going to vote them separately? Are we going to make one motion? And the reason that I ask is because for certain line items, I need to abstain personally, because my, my child is participating, but not necessarily all of them.
Understood, so what we would do is.
Abstain on all of them.
Right.
So, we, we can divide that, divide the question.
Okay. I think Kristen's in a similar position. I don't know about Jen, but, you know, that's three of us that would, potentially, that if we take it all as one, couldn't.
I defer Nancy as the dean. We don't have enough of us.
You can do, you have two choices, I believe. I believe you can abstain and a vote passes with the abstentions. And I think the other option is to use what's called the rule of necessity.
Yep.
And I don't know, the thing that I don't know is whether, the rule of necessity says if a school committee, or if a body needs to make a decision and you don't have enough potential voting people, a person or people declare the fact that they're going to vote only because the, the committee would be logjammed otherwise. I think maybe the simplest thing would be to tell people to abstain if it's something, so if, if we ended up with a 3-0-3 vote, that's a positive vote, right? So, I think that that's the cleanest thing to do, is if it's something that your child would, or you would have to pay as a family, that you would abstain.
So, we can, we can divide the question for each. I'm out. If that pleases everyone, if you feel comfortable. Any further questions before doing so, or comments? Mrs. Galavan?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, like, make a big thing over it, but I hate the fact that the only people we charge to park anywhere in town are 16 and 17 and 18-year-olds. So, there's, there's something about that parking fee. So there's something about that parking fee that just doesn't sit right with me. But maybe I'm the only one who feels that way.
Well, I'm looking at it, you know, and again, this could possibly affect me. I'd rather pay, you know, $50 of parking fees than $300 for a bus. Though, I mean, if my child's driving, I'm not paying for the bus, so I don't know. I look at it that way. But again, that's just my perspective.
If I understand one other thing, the parking fees do go towards the bus contract. So the offset, the revenue offsets the bus contract. They're kind of tied together.
Is Galatit, you had something? All right. I'll just go down the line if no further comments or questions. Do I have a motion to raise the food service fees and lunch prices for the FY '21, FY '22 school year? By 25 cents a piece, moving high school lunch to $4, high school middle school breakfast to $2.75, and elementary school lunch to $3.75, and elementary school breakfast to $2.50.
Just to clarify, you're raising the lunch and the breakfast?
Yes.
And that included both revenue projections in there?
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Galavan, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. 3-0-3, the motion passes.
Can I just ask a question about food service before we go on? How are you feeling that we're doing in terms of actually collecting revenue? Is that a problem that you've, I know that you never get to absolutely perfect. But do you feel like we've made steps in the right direction there, Mike?
So we just recently compiled lists, met with the principals. We've gotten, sometimes when we get to a point where we feel like we need to reach out to the principals, we do. And we dished it around to collections and collected $46,000 additional dollars. So I feel like that made a, that made a big difference, but we don't like to do that too often. So we've made some progress. We're going to face this challenge right up to the end of the year. But we, every year, come up with new strategies for collecting the money and trying to work with families to make this doable. So I think we're making progress. I can't tell you where we'll end the year. I will tell you when we get to that point, but...
Can you let us know in a month where we are? Because I think it's just something, unfortunately, that we have to pay attention to. Thanks.
Further comments on the food service? Bus transportation, may I have a motion to raise the bus transportation regular fee to $300, the late fee to $325, the family cap to $600, and the family cap with late fees to $650?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Galavan, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. 4-0-2, the motion carries. May I have a motion to increase the fees for extended day by 5%? I'm sorry. By the administration-recommended 3%.
So I guess I would have to come back to you each year. We're on a trajectory of 3% a year to keep pace with the minimum wage and the growth of labor. Okay.
Is that what you're recommending, Mike?
3% would be my recommendation.
This is perfect. Kind of time to do it next year as well.
So the motion is to raise extended day fees by 3% for the FY '21 school year?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Galavan, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. Okay. 5-0-1, the motion carries. And lastly, a motion to raise the Walpole High School parking fee from $200 per year to $225 per year.
Electantly so moved.
Motion by Mrs. Galavan, second by Ms. Galatit. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained. 6-0-0. Thank you very much.
There was four, one, four places, and we've already raised preschool fees.
Correct.
Correct. And this will be reflected in the consolidated budget, correct, Mike? That that's...
So I can now increase the revenue based on these projections on the comprehensive?
Yes, the comprehensive, sorry. That's what, yes, exactly. Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments on fees? Seeing none? Thank you, Mike. Superintendent's report?
Don't blink, you might miss it. So since we had the February break, it's been a whole six days since we last met. So it's brief. So this week was spent on, and also part of last week, too, was spent on working on the budget. This week, building visits, MSBA, the middle school project, all of that work. The Walpole Drug and Alcohol Coalition, we met Tuesday. And what Melissa mentioned is that she's going to have all future meetings the last Tuesday of the month. She thought that that would be helpful, and people would remember that and try to get, to increase participation. And the, just a reminder, the video poster contest is when, the due date is Wednesday, March 4th. We'll vote on the 9th, and then we'll have an award ceremony on the 24th. And that'll be at the Council on Aging, which is, we had it at the police station, and it was packed. So we needed more room. I mentioned it's hard to believe it's going to be March next week. And Monday, March 2nd, is National Read Across America. Bill Hahn and I will be in, and Ms. Cass Reeters will come in the morning, you're in the afternoon. Yep, so we're looking forward to it. And I also have MSBA items, but I'll save that for the old business.
Excellent. Questions for Dr. Goff?
What are you reading?
I'm going to read All the Places You'll Go by Dr. Sis. I have a fifth grade class. You're a fifth grader, you have the younger one.
Younger, I'm doing teacher choice. I like that.
And the newsletter did make it out the Friday before the...
Congratulations.
And, oh, can I mention one other thing? I will hand you, I know you ended up getting probably an electronic copy, but just went out tonight just to district information about keeping healthy coronavirus and, you know, what we're doing in the schools. And then also just a reminder, some reminders of keeping healthy, and just some links about a fact sheet. And that was written by myself and the head nurse, Kathy Garben, with Bill's editing as well. So thank you.
Seeing no questions, moving on to old business. Second reading of the Healthy, I'm sorry, Respectful School District Resolution. Just as, by way of background, last week, we had in our packets for our first reading, Respectful School District Resolution, which in partnership with the MASC and Lieutenant Governor Polito, districts around our Commonwealth have been passing. This resolution is a recommendation by the Office of Health and Human Services, as well as the Governor's Council to address sexual assault and domestic violence, to increase support and awareness and prevention to help reduce the number of individuals who experience sexual and domestic violence in their lives. Danitio brought it to our attention, so if you'd like to speak out a little bit before we take...
Yeah, I mean, we talked a little bit about it last time, and I will just point out again that the respectfully.ma.gov website has a lot of resources. Kind of, you can search by your locale and find things that are local to you. And also, if you go on YouTube, there, you can access the Respectfully short videos that are meant to be instructive about healthy relationships. And I just want to say, after hearing from Marie Doherty and Chris Riley tonight, I think it underscores that this would not really just be a symbolic gesture on our part to adopt this resolution, but it would really be representative of work that is ongoing and is really student-driven in our schools already. And I think that they deserve recognition for that work.
Excellent. Mrs. Galavan?
I would add to that, even just the core values that the elementary schools spoke of, it just ties together very well in terms of, these are the things that matter.
Danitio, would you like to read it?
Yes, I will. A resolution to designate Walpole Public Schools as a respectful school district, whereas the Governor's Council to address sexual assault and domestic violence in partnership with the Executive Office of Health and Human Services and the Massachusetts State Legislature has recommended increased support for awareness and prevention efforts with the goal of reducing the number of individuals who experience sexual assault and domestic violence in their lives. Whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts developed a public awareness and prevention campaign, Respectfully, highlighting healthy relationships for Massachusetts youth aged 12 to 18. Whereas it is important to educate youth about the value of respect and characteristics of healthy and unhealthy relationships. Whereas the key message of the Respectfully campaign is that everyone deserves respect, honesty, and open communication. Whereas youth-serving individuals and organizations can encourage parents and caregivers to be aware of the signs of unhealthy behaviors, educate youth on what respect looks like, and have clear conversations about consent. Whereas parents and caregivers can help lower the risk for teens experiencing unhealthy or abusive relationships by having open, honest, nonjudgmental, and continuous conversations with youth about respect in friendships and romantic relationships. Now therefore be it resolved that the Walpole School Committee designates Walpole Public Schools a respectful school district in support of Respectfully, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Public Awareness and Prevention Campaign.
Please the committee, could I have a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained. 6-0-0. We've got a second piece of old businesses, Massachusetts School Building Authority update. Dr. Goff?
Yes, so included in your packets are the handouts from the MSBA meeting in Boston on February 3rd. I'd be rid, who's in attendance? Clark, you were in attendance, Nancy, Jim Johnson, Patrick Shear. We're at that meeting. So I wanted to give you a copy. Just as a reminder, MSBA voted to appoint Compass Project Management to be the owner, the orders project management firm for the Byrd Middle School Project. And appointing the OPM, that's the first critical step in the process of forming a project team. So I just wanted to just highlight a couple of items in this handout. You know, the first piece just outlines our lead team for Compass. Tim Bonifanti and Brian Kelly, Brian Jarvis, Tony Pena, and Mary Cuppins is the project accounting. But they'll have that feasibility phase, and then they'll also have this construction phase with some of our members. The second page states, they just, what they did is highlighted their work at the Kennedy Middle School in Nadek, that we were actually able to visit, the Shear, Mike, myself, and Nancy, as it was being built. And it was being built right next to the school that's in session. So it was a great opportunity for us to be able to see that. I wanted to bring your attention to the approach timeline because this will really kind of change our next steps from where it says June to October, that the next steps of the preliminary design program. So you can see the approval and on, and then you can see the designer selection piece, which is our next step. And then you look at October 20th, which is usually, you submit your, the PDP is the preliminary design program. That's the really, that's the thick packet of everything, soup to nuts. And that is, a big chunk of that is our educational piece, our educational plan. So when you look at that and you think, okay, that's all well and good, we've got, you know, October. Well, if you look even at this next page, typically, June to October, that's when you start your community input and visioning. But what we were talking about, Mike and I were talking about with in Compass and making some decisions, that's the summer. So you don't want to come back from the summer. It's really hard to get people to do visioning during the summer. And you come back from the summer, you can't do visioning, and then we write an education plan in three weeks. You know, we're good, but we're not that good. So we're going to have to move up the visioning, the community, the visioning, but it needs to begin this spring. So Compass has been in touch, and he knows, we've actually been communicating back and forth of moving this up now, getting two visioning sessions in, at least two sessions in. Starting that, being able to have some input, so then over the summer, starting to develop this plan and ongoing. It's really important we do that. So they do realize that, so we will be moving that up. So when you look at your next page, it says June to October to have community input and visioning. That's going to be moved up to, you know, starting, you know, March, April. We need to get that. And then 2000, you can see February, approximately February 2021, that's when we submit the preferred schematic report. And then shortly after that is the schematic design report, that's the SD report. And then the ballot vote is anticipated as October of 2021. So you do all this work, and then you go forward with the ballot vote. And then after that ballot vote is successful, that's when you complete the design development, the construction, the CD, the construction documents, and then you start construction design. One document, this document has 223. There's another document, we have a school building committee meeting March 10th. And construction could actually start a little bit earlier than that. Could be December of 2022. It depends, you know, as of the weather. But those following pages just take you through the process. So you can see the preliminary design, the schematic design, the preferred schematic design, and then the actual schematic design.
Can I just interrupt for a second? Just to clarify about the vote. So the timeline has, it says town meeting ballot vote October 21st. So that's not a town-wide vote at that stage, correct? That's a town meeting members voting? Or is it...
No, that's the, that's a dead exclusion. That's the...
So is that a special election, or rather, special vote? Okay.
It'll be a special one.
So it's both? So town meeting votes first?
Right.
RTMs vote first, and then it goes to the entire town?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is just general?
This is just general.
This is not like etched in stone yet?
Because if you don't get, for example, your designer selection process done, like, they have dates of, you know, when they want us to get, what they're expecting. But let's say something happens that doesn't get done, it pushes everything out.
But so it's not that the vote is going to wait until the next June when we have the town election to happen? It's going to happen when it's appropriate for it to happen?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's new information, probably, for the community, that it wouldn't be in our typical June election, that it would be a separate.
And that's a good point, that you talk about the community, because what Compass will do, our website, our school building website, they take that over and help us with that and put pertinent information. And then they're going to have a website that the community can use, sorry, an email address. An email address the community can use to ask questions, and then we can respond to them.
Mrs. Galavan?
I guess what I would say is, this is just the timeline that Compass put forward. And the way I look at it is, that's about the soonest we could have a town vote. But they will listen to our community. And if we say, no, 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 we want to wait until the town elections, that would be an option. I'm not suggesting that that's what we would want to do because it would add another, you know, eight months or so onto. But it's too soon to say, you know, this is what we decided because we haven't had the discussion yet.
Ms. Simon?
So I have a question about, so we've got the whole visioning process, which, you know, we might move up. When do we have the discussion about, is it one middle school? Is it, you know, just Byrd? Where's the location? Because if we're talking about visioning, do we even know what we're visioning?
That's a good question. It kind of leads to the feasibility study process.
Awesome. Because I didn't see, I didn't see it on the timeline.
I think this is the one Jen said that you really liked. So what they do is they take it, this options analysis, and then they go ahead, if you take a look at that, and get through criteria, research, narrowing, and then come up with a preferred solution. So what they do is they have all of these evaluation criteria. I know you need a magnifying glass to see this, but if it, online, we can send it to you electronically. They have all this evaluation criteria, like... They have all this evaluation criteria, like educational programming, accommodation compliance with your vision, scheduling, cost, construction impact, how construction might impact neighbors, for example, public safety recommendations. And then they take that, and then they go ahead, and they have these categories, like leave existing part of the building, or new school option, I think it's option one. Then they might say, you know, new school, you know, here, option two. And I think, Jen, you were saying that it's nice, because it has green, yellow, and red for the different areas of all of these different options across the board. So you can really see what are some of the preferred options.
I thought it took a process which seems confusing and made it as objective as possible by examining the criteria that is important to the community, and then color coding it. So they gave us an example, and, you know, I think the example was really helpful to see how another school district made their decision. And it was kind of just obvious the way it came out. And, you know, when you just looked at all the possibilities, it seems very overwhelming. But when you look at all the factors and kind of weigh them, yeah, it just made it more objective.
Yeah, with that criteria, like this site, new site, other site, or renovate. So it really goes like, and it'll take it, and it'll narrow it down.
And that all happens before the...
That's all part of the feasibility.
Before the visioning.
No, that's, that's done, you're visioning. If you look here, it's part of this part, it's that hole when they go through the schematic.
Okay.
The schematic pieces.
I guess what I would add is, that's why we hired a professional.
Sure.
Because it does feel confusing to say, well, how do you do it? But they've done it with multiple communities successfully. So, you know, I don't think any of us can answer in detail, well, how do they, you know, considering that you could have, you're still entertaining different options, how do you vision?
Well, yeah, that's why, like, when you say preliminary design, and we're still in feasibility, it's confusing to me, that's why.
Don't get hung up on the words.
Yes, because I think design is, you know, I'm going to see, like...
The actual building.
Or just a thought of what a building could look like. So, okay, thank you.
Further questions?
Like I said, school building committee meeting is on March 10th. And then the designer selection timeline, we're looking at a target date to go to the MSBA on May 19th and June 2nd. So those are the two, May 19th and June 2nd, so.
Anything further on that?
Seeing none, any subcommittee activity in the last week?
No, I guess we weren't here.
Citizens' comments? Just want to acknowledge that over the vacation was Jen Giotto's birthday first, and then we'll have, wish her a happy birthday. I didn't know, friends, come on up with...
Doug Chan with the Finance Committee, and I was really here tonight to listen to article, item four about the fees. But it got me wondering about the Finance Committee conversation we had. And a comment was made during that meeting that kind of left me uneasy. And I was wondering if perhaps the committee could talk about how you guys review your budget, and some of the things that go through.
Like the process?
Yeah, it's a big budget, 600 some odd pages. And it was, I didn't attend the public hearings, I haven't gone to any of the subcommittee meetings, but I was just a little uneasy with some of the comments that were made. And I was just curious if some of you could describe some of the processes that you go through, how you review your budget?
Sure. Want me to start?
Yeah, I can.
Chris, you can jump in, and other members? Well, the process begins really for the upcoming fiscal year in December, where we meet with our department heads, and we sort of discuss needs we see upon the horizon, and get an update of some of the large structural changes we may have implemented to the budget. For example, how the, this year, we heard about how the two counselors were working out the way we put into the elementary school. Then after that, well, actually, before that, the School Leadership Council will meet before that meeting. So that's in early December, and talk about their priorities and needs and trends that they see. And then we, we as a committee, have that workshop in December. In January, we have our budget public hearings, where we get the budgets, we go through them, and then we ask questions of leadership, and they talk about, again, trends that they see and areas where expansion or reallocation of funds may be needed. With Frisher, Business Manager Frisher as well. We also talk about throughout the year, so we'll usually get a revenue update and a discussion with what the state picture looks like around the consensus revenue period, which is in January as well, which we are working with MAS C as well, with what they're hearing, try to kind of project what perhaps the cherry sheets will look like, which also come in in that early period. And then through our budget hearing process, you know, we have the first piece of public input, and the opportunity to ask questions about specific parts of the budget, and then we come to you. I am handicapped, because I watched the meeting, but I didn't, I wasn't there because I had the flu. You guys are all welcome, I didn't affect you. But could you maybe clarify for me what were concerning comments?
There was a comment made about a deep dive not being made into looking into the budget. And at a time when you're raising fees and requesting more money from the town, it kind of concerned me that a deep dive wasn't being taken.
Ms. Gav?
Yeah, I was there, and I'm trying to figure out, like, where you were most concerned. I don't remember that the, I think that was a miss, I think that was a mistake in terms of either how you heard it or what was said, because we do do a deep dive. I mean, in addition to the process that Bill was just talking about, I look at it as 80 some odd percent of our budget is personnel. So the biggest thing that we had to do in the last year was negotiate the teacher's contract. And that, you know, that causes you to pull apart your budget in a bunch of different ways, because you want to be able to, you want to be able to hire the best people, given how much money you have available. So you kind of have to evaluate where you are compared to other towns that you know you're competing against in the teacher market. But you have to then reconcile it with the available revenue. So there was an awful lot of work done in the springtime in that regard. There's also a ton of information that the Department of Revenue, I'm sorry, the Department of Education puts out, where they look at your per pupil spending, and you can, and we do. We look at, you can look at it in general categories, like, are we spending too much in administration relative to the amount of money that we have available? But it gets broken down in tremendous detail. And we did that as a committee in October, I want to say. So you, before you even start, at least, this is my mindset, before you even start looking at building the next year's budget, you look at where you are. And if, for example, we decided, we decided in 2012, when we did the override, that we wanted to try to preserve some money for professional development. So you look at where you're spending, and you say, hey, do we have enough? Or do we need to figure out how to allocate more there? So that kind of work is done even before you start looking at the additions for the next year. So I think, I really think it was just a, somewhere, there was some miscommunication, because I know that Bridget, Bill Hahn, and Mike, being sort of first year in this role without Lincoln Lynch, who was known to be the, you know, the nuts and bolts money guy, they own it, and they want to own it, and so do we. I mean, so it was, it was a pretty deep dive.
I actually thought it was much better than last year, personally.
Thank you.
But it was just, you know, again, when you're coming and you're asking for more money, I just wanted to have a comfort level, that it was being properly reviewed. It's not a Finance Committee budget, it's a School Committee budget. And I'll go back and look at those comments, I may have taken them out of context. It just, it left me a little uncomfortable.
No, it would be helpful for you to do that, so we can see, if, when you're looking, you know, it's where it's coming from. If it was, you know, talking about, you know, from what type, if it was personnel, if it had to do with the special education increase, if it had to do with, you know, Medicaid reduction, if it had to do with goods and services. We can take a look at, you know, grants, you know.
I don't remember exactly what it was. The handout that you gave was very helpful, really outlining, you know, what you needed just to keep level funding. Yeah, I thought it was more in regards to fees and other things. So I'll take a look at it.
Okay. And we'll be back Thursday?
Yes.
So we'll look more at the, you know, the FTEs piece of it. So you can see we're doing things a little differently, so you'll be able to digest that. And we'll get that to you before the Thursday.
I would also point out something that happened this evening. We talked about the possible change in the way tournaments would be done, and athletic transportation in general. We kind of started the conversation around, hey, we might have to buy a big yellow bus, and that might be the cost saving. Those type of discussions are sprinkled throughout the entire year and ongoing. And I, so the beginning of that discussion, which may blossom, happened tonight. But another discussion I would point to would be the way we did technology. We looked in the spring and said there was an opportunity to completely reallocate, revamp that program, and have an opportunity for some cost savings, and also increase student service in the process. So those type of things, we can go further back in time and talk about, like, the food service industry, which is the gold standard model of how we were able to turn a department to be much more efficient, you know, or the white vans that are up at Johnson's. So those type of things, in part of the budget, are a strong central part of the budget process, but are an ongoing piece, as well, as we're always, you know, doing zero-based budgeting and looking at the needs and necessities, and how best to reallocate things to speak to them.
Ms. Gav?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we are seriously trying to accept constructive criticism. So I admire the fact that you came and said it to us, as opposed to about us. So that's one good thing. I also think that it's by far the largest budget that gets, you know, voted at town meeting. So, you know, the, if, we know that we're trying to communicate, but if there are times where it doesn't sit right, we do want to hear it, because, you know, a lot of effort has gone into trying to do a good job. But communication is one of those things you can always do better with, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Danitzio?
I will make a motion to approve the following payroll warrants from February 6th, number 2032 PA, and from February 20th, number 2034 PA, for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second. Motion by Ms. Danitzio, second by Mr. Breen, all is in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0.
Make a motion to accept the following accounts payable warrants from February 13th, number 220033, from February 20th, number 220034, and from November, excuse me, February 27th, 220035, for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second. Motion by Ms. Danitzio, second by Mr. Breen, all is in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Would someone like to take the gift and donation approval list?
Yep. Make a motion to accept the following gifts to OPR from Sue Ann Zimansky, used iPad Air, in the amount of $150, to OPR from Needham Public Schools, 25 used iPads, in the amount of $625, to OPR from the OPR PAC, iPads in the amount of $2,000, to Elm Street from Bay State Textiles Recycling, in the amount of $39.75.
Second. Motion by Ms. Danitzio, second by Mr. Breen, all is in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Would someone like to take minute approval?
Sure, I can make a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes for February 13th, 2020.
Second. Motion by Ms. Danitzio, second by Mr. Breen, all is in favor? Opposed, abstained. Have any no further business, Mr. Breen?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Thank you.